I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, September 24th, and we'll start with roll call.
Tree Steiner?
Here.
Mike Den?
Here.
Barbara Dawes has been excused. Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Dick Bonin?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Nylee Nichols?
Here.
Before we get started, I would just like to remind everyone again that if you have a topic on the agenda that you would like to speak on, that we ask that you fill out this form and then give it to our city clerk. She gives it to me and then I call on you when the subject comes up. If you have something, just general citizen comment, observation, petition, we also ask that you do it for that. The first item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First item is the minutes of the September 10th regular council meeting. B was payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions. And this evening, there are appointments to the following boards and commissions. To the Board of Appeals zoning, there's a reappointment of Mark Myers. To the Water and Sewer Commission, a reappointment to Peter Davis. And a new appointment to Sarah Fosbinder. And if anyone has objections, they should note that. Just a note to the public and to the council members that we do have vacancies on various boards. Historic Preservation Commission, we have two vacancies for alternates. Roundtree Gallery Board, we have one vacancy. Board of Appeals zoning alternate, we have one vacancy. And Community Development Board, one vacancy. And I would encourage citizens to go on to plattville.org and look at those committees, commissions, and boards and apply to serve. And also ask the council people to come up with some recommendations for those boards. The other one is the museum working group. At our August 13th council meeting, a motion was made to accept the museum task force report and to form a working group to move forward to implement and possibly adopt the recommendations of the task force. So, to achieve that goal, I am appointing a working group which will have the following responsibilities. First is to deal with the mechanics that result in the formal combination of the current two museums to one. Two is to present an operating document that specifies the city's support of the physical space, buildings and grounds that house the museum. Three, draft a memorandum of understanding that outlines the city's commitment as it relates to annual operating grants to support the museum. Or assist with the legal aspects of the formation of a 501(c)(3) to operate the museum, thus removing all aspects of museum operations from the city. And five, recommend to recruit the initial board of directors and support the development of the charter for that board. This does follow the recommendations that the task force had set. Hopefully, we can work this through for the betterment of all. So, the appointees are Bev Johansson, Tracy Roberts, Craig Trongard, Bill Van Diest, and Barb Dawes will be the council representative. The first meeting will take place in October. We have not yet determined a time and date, but when that is formed, then everyone will be notified. Licenses. Number one is extend the license premises of NICS at 74 and 1/2 North Second Street on September 28th and October 19th. Number two is one or and/or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic and fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors, and the list of those licenses is in the packet. E is permit, street closing permit for a second street block party on October 2nd, excuse me, October 12th, 13th. And F is Halloween trick-or-treat hours, which has been set from, on October 31st, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Doug, did you want to say anything else about that?
That's what the traditional hours have been, and always on the 31st, so I stayed with that.
Okay.
I move to accept the consent calendar as listed.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Vote?
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is citizens comments, observations, and petitions, if any. And please limit your comments to more, no more than five minutes. And the first person that's asked to speak is Kim Schmelz.
Hi. I'm Kim Schmelz. I'm the Director of Alumni Services at UW-Platteville. And I'm just here to let you know, we have a homecoming hustle coming up, a 5K on October 5th, and we wanted to temporarily close down two roads when the race starts. So, I've been working with Chief Markwart on campus, and he's commuted with Chief McKinley. So, I just wanted to inform you in case you get any questions about it. The route will start on the track at the campus, and then they'll run up Longhorn, down Greenway to Memorial Park. So, we were just gonna temporarily close Longhorn while the pack of runners goes through, up through Greenway. So, we'd have people stationed at College and Greenway, and then they would proceed down to the park. After that, we figure they'll pretty much be split up, so that they will cross Southwest once they get through the park, and then they'll come up Marquee, turn on Southwest, or turn on, I'm sorry. Yeah, Southwest, and then to Hickory. So, we'll just have volunteers along the way helping them get through the course. But, like I said, just five to 10 minutes at the start while the pack goes through. We have about 85 runners registered right now. We're expecting about 125 by the time of race day. So, that's why we thought it would be safe for our runners. And there's a Platteville cross-country invite happening at that same time on Memorial Park, so we wanted to make sure everybody was safe that way as well.
You meant Greenwood, not Greenway?
Oh, yes, sorry. Greenwood.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no other requests for citizens comments.
Was there one more?
There was one more. Yes, I do.
Hand it in late.
Hand it in late. Arlene.
Did you say handed in late?
I did.
It's the first by me.
Arlene Sis, 130 North Hickory Street, Platteville. I'm here on behalf of the Grant County Historical Society, and we are doing another event this Thursday. It is going to be Hooper Trades, and Hoopers are barrel makers. We have two of them coming from Madison, and they are the Hess Brothers, or I should say cousins, but they are the, their great-grandfather is the one who founded the largest barrel-making company in Wisconsin, including Petosi and others. And because this was an oak savanna, it is considered that, and I believe that some of the barrels were made, or the oaks were taken from this area to Madison. And evidently, he was quite the maker of, or his company was quite the maker of barrels as some of them went out as far east as New York and that type of thing. And he had discovered something very different. When I went to the reenactment, I talked to a barrel maker there, and he was from the eastern part of our state, and he said that he has heard these two gentlemen, and he said they're outstanding. So, I urge all of you to come. It's going to be right here in the auditorium, so you guys could sleep over a couple nights here and then just go downstairs. Anyway, but it's gonna be here, and I'm very excited that they're coming, and we would like to invite everybody who is tuning in on the television to come and join us. It starts at 7:00, and I think it's gonna be absolutely excellent.
What date?
Thursday night, this coming Thursday, at 7:00.
Okay.
The next thing is I just would like to add one other thing. We had our Autumn Fest, the first time we've ever done it, at the Stone Cottage this past Sunday, and it was really a very successful event. First day of autumn, we had our Autumn Fest, and we had lots and lots of families of all ages and children, and it was just fantastic. And we had quite a few from out of town that came to it to participate in the event. So, thank you for your time, and this is what we're looking at. Thank you. Under reports, we have quite a few this evening. The Tourism Committee, Steiner?
Nothing to add.
Board of Zoning Appeals, Den?
Nothing at all.
Commission on Aging, Bonin?
Nothing to add.
Redevelopment Authority Dawes, and she is not present. Plan Commission, Den, I missed that meeting.
Nothing other than the minutes.
Okay. Library Board, I have nothing to add on that either. Air Port Commission, nothing to add. Park Forestry and Recreation, Killian?
No addition.
Area Ambulance Committee, again, that would be Dawes. Housing Authority Board, Killian?
No addition to that.
And Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition. Minutes are in the packet.
All right. I'm going to add just general information. Again, I placed this letter that I received from the University of Wisconsin-Platteville in front of all the council people. The council people have been invited to join the university for their 89th Annual Homecoming Parade on Saturday, October 5th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And they are asking that if you plan to attend, or if you do not plan to attend, that you would please contact Joyce Burkhholder. Her email address and phone number are provided. And it says, please let Eileen know, but actually, I think it'll be easier if you all just contact her yourself. And they would like to know who will be planning to ride, so that we have sufficient vehicles. So, I think that's important. The other item is that also in front of the council people this evening is the City Manager Performance Evaluation Form. This is something that we need to complete before the end of the year, and I'm handing it out this evening and ask that each council person return it to me by October 8th, which is our next council meeting. You can put it in my City Hall mailbox, or you can bring it that evening. And then we'll talk about it again in the second meeting in October. Any questions on any of the reports? The other reports in the packet are the Building Inspection Report and Department Progress Reports. Any questions on those or comments?
I have a question on the building inspection.
Okay.
My question is, here is one about parking on lawn. Now, this is not the only situation, so why was this one cited, this particular one versus not any other ones?
You are not allowed to park on the lawn.
I realize that, but is this selective enforcement? Why did this enforcement come about?
I don't know that anyone can answer that.
Well, I see there's a junk vehicle, 495, same address, garbage accumulation. So, was that site, that address written up for all these things, and nobody else was written up for parking on the lawn?
Well, I'm confused, I guess, by the question. There's two citations for parking on the lawn, so it's not, it's more than one this month, and it's not selective as far as we've given citations out for parking on the lawns previously. These just happen to be two for this particular period of time.
Joe, you could go out there right now and drive around town and write 25 of these. Real simple, there's cars on the lawns all over.
Why aren't there other ones being written up?
Well, I guess because they haven't been identified yet.
By whom?
Turned into you?
These particular ones, I don't know if, the one on Irene Street, I think we received some complaints on. The one on Mineral Street was identified, I don't know how. I think we got a complaint on that as well. Otherwise, it's when the, either the police or the building inspector either receive a complaint or notice it when they're out and about.
If there are 20 of them around the neighborhood and you see them, please let us know. We'll make sure we get enforcement on it.
Last, last winter, I had a citizen come see me about parking on the grass, parking on the lawn, and was there a program that was started at that time? Because we received a complaint from this one person on Southwest Road about number of vehicles on Southwest Road that were parking on the lawn, and it's something, it sounded to me like something started. So, did something start, and then it's now stopped? Or did it never start in a wide scale? Who could answer that? Somebody, somebody was giving out information and tickets.
I think the only thing that I would say may have changed, we've always had that as a rule of no parking on the lawn, is when we put in the new restrictions on parking in that part of the city, it was, I guess, given a higher emphasis because we knew that would be a result. If they can't park on the street, they're gonna find a spot elsewhere. So, there was some additional enforcement starting last, last year.
So, there's no general enforcement?
There isn't anybody who has a job of driving around and only looking for parking on the grass. Building Inspector will do it when he notices it or receives a complaint, and the Police Department, my understanding is when they notice it or receive a complaint, they will also address it.
And we will make a point to make contact with people and advise them of the ordinance, and frequently, they'll get moved, and then they end up back there again. We'd rather have voluntary compliance, so we try and achieve that through initially warnings or education.
So, was there a program last winter?
I don't know what you mean by a program.
Well, did, were people, was, was, were the police going around and giving out flyers to people?
Not per se. We try and educate them, like tonight, when we had a community meeting, we try and educate people about ordinances that they may not be aware of. So, look for a program. I don't know if I'd call it that, but an education campaign.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? First action item is Resolution 1339 regarding the 2014 fee schedule. Staff presentation?
This, this was in your packet from last council meeting. If you recall, we did make some changes to the Building Inspections Department, and the city council had asked for feedback as to how we came to the numbers we did. And included in your packet is a handout at your request for both the building permit fee comparison spreadsheet. It's the last page of the section. And then the council also asked for a copy of the MV Services Contract, and we also put that in the packet for your review. Are there any questions?
Larry, I have a question. On the hotel motel permit, we didn't have one before I take it, and now it's $100. That's, who determines?
Which department is that under?
Pardon me, that's on page, page number, it's...
What, what department?
Administration.
I'm sorry, administration. It's on the back of the first page and bottom. Under business license permits. I think it's that far.
Jan, can you, Jan, do you have recollection as to what that permit is? I know we talked about that, and I can't remember.
Yes, we do the, an annual permit for the, for hotels in town, and Dwayne gets the, determines the room tax revenue from those permits. We, we've never charged for those. There's never been a charge for them before.
Okay. Some idea that just decided to start charging people more for things like that, or?
Yes, we reviewed the permits, and we hope to review them on an annual basis every year. And that was a permit that if we don't charge anything for, it certainly is going to consume some staff time and probably should have an expense. At least, that's what I've recommended.
Okay. What do you mean you have to review these permits? If motel's a motel, correct? They just give you a permit?
Right. But we still have paperwork associated with the room tax collection and...
But we've always had that. For the last, what, 13 years or so, something like that?
Right. The revenue from the room tax, 70% goes back to the hotel, excuse me.
Chamber.
2% goes back to the hotel, 28% goes to the city's general fund, and then 70%, I believe, has to be spent on room generating activities.
Doesn't that go back to the chamber, then?
No, it goes to the tourism entity.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
Rental inspection fees. The recommendation here is to increase the fee from $90 to $115. Now, I did, if my math is correct, that turns out to be a 27% increase. And I asked a question previously as to whether or not, how much we needed to cover the cost of rental inspection, and that answer is not known.
That's correct.
So, that, I think this increase is excessive. I, a year ago, we looked at rental inspection, and I think there are ways that we can improve on as far as looking at how much is paid to our consultant, whatever you want to call them. I believe they get $82. Is that correct, Joe? You get 82 out of the 90?
$82, there's some additional fees that they get for rooming houses and so forth, but the base fee is $82.
So, it's, the city is getting $8, then, you're saying? Out of that 90?
Right.
Okay. So, I think that's excessive to go up 27%. I could go along with a 10% increase at this time, but I do not favor going to 115. And I think we need to, as I said before, need to take a look at the program and see if we can make it more efficient, and also need to be taking a look at what we are getting for our money, as far as how good are the inspections. Thank you. Well, my other point is that if we look at trying to make a program pay for itself, rental, rentals are business. What about the beverage industry? When you look at the cost of police, what is the cost of alcohol-related issues? I think that cost is 2/3 of our police budget. Is that a good estimate?
I don't know, Ken.
Well, I...
I don't know if you have any way of figuring that out.
I went through, one year, went through six months of the police reports, and as far as police reports, there were 2/3 to 3/4 of the, of the reports involved alcohol issues. And I talked to you about it, and you said that my estimate was low as far as percentage of time, money spent on alcohol issues.
I don't recall right now.
Well, it was, you said at the time about 2/3 of the budget. Is that correct?
I don't recall right now, Ken.
Okay. So, in other words, what I'm getting at here is that we're trying to make the rental industry pay for the cost of licensing. Why don't we look more at what can the beverage industry pay increase?
The liquor license fees are set by state statutes. We have no ability to increase those. If we could, I suspect that would be one way to do what you're proposing.
Yes. But we need to put on our thinking capsule as to what we can do locally here as far as increasing the income from the industry, because of the tremendous cost to the citizens of this city. And so, why do we select out the rental business as one to support, support itself? Thank you.
I would support Ken's view on the rental inspection. I own income property, but that's not why I'm commenting on it. I think that the increase seems to be excessive. I would agree with, with Ken in proportion to the other increases. And I think too that the question that Ken had asked was, well, how much does it really cost the city beyond the contractor that actually does the inspections? And there doesn't seem to be a clear number on that, and, and I think that if you're going to raise a fee, you should at least have the background information that explains, as was explained in the staff report from some of the other permit fees that are going to be increased, especially related to building permits. So, I, I would concur with Ken that perhaps an increase to $100, but not 115 per unit. I could, that's approximately 10%, so I would agree with that. And I see that the alcohol fees, actually, Class A beer is being increased to 150?
That's the only one that's not set by state statute.
The only one that's not set by state.
So, there can be any dollar amount that you want.
Okay.
It only affects a couple places.
All right.
And I'm going to have to go along with what you just said also on rental inspection. I also am landlord, and for other reasons other than that, besides, as you so spoke.
Again, I under...
When was the last time these fees were raised?
2007.
And they were raised, what, $10? I know it's a three-year, a three-year license, right? So, it's $30 a year, really?
Correct. I believe they went from 60 to 90, if I recall correctly.
That's 2010?
2007, when they was adopted, going to effect in 2008.
There was a big increase to $90 for three years. That was the big jump.
Right, because we based it off of the contract, for the most part.
Has the contract changed, or is it the same amount? It has not changed, okay.
What, what contract is that?
We contract out for the actual inspections of income property. The city staff does not do it.
Does that $80 pay for actually what they do, or is there, is the company that this gentleman works for also makes some of it?
Sir?
Off of that, that 80, his, his $80 or whatever it is?
That's the question. The question is, what are we getting for the $82?
Exactly.
And maybe we need to develop...
When we did...
Better standards as far as when they go in and inspect, as to what they're going to inspect. And I've been with inspectors, and some of them go through rather quickly.
I, I think this issue comes up pretty much every year, every other year, and we look at creating a rental task force. Is that something you'd like to do again? Get a task force together to look over the rental license like we did the last time?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Well, safety. Safety's number one. And when you look at the list, most of it has to do with safety. Electrical, roof, insulation, plumbing. I mean, I don't know, it's only a few dollars a year, every three years, to pay for this. And the landlord, no offense to these landlords, but they're acquiring revenue. I mean, I get an inspection every year, and I'm commercial, so...
Yeah, and I don't think anyone's objecting to the inspection. I think the question is, did the increase, compared to the other increases that are being proposed?
Is $7 a year too much? I mean, compared to the other fees?
Not in my mind. No, I don't either.
Well, we need a motion. If there's no further discussion.
I'll make a motion that we table this and have some more discussion on it before we go jumping off.
Just this point or the whole thing?
This whole thing.
Really? Oh, goodness.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion for tabling, and we'll have to vote on that.
Steiner?
No.
Den?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
No.
Bonin?
No.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
No.
Motion.
So, we're back to...
No, motion ties, so...
Another motion relative to the fee schedule?
Motion fails. I'm sorry. There were four no's and two yeses.
Okay, sorry, Jan, didn't mean to rush you.
Well, I would move to approve Resolution 13-39 regarding the 2014 fee schedule. And for right now, take out the rental inspection and licensing fees for further discussion.
I, I second that motion.
The motion and a second?
Correct. I mean, that's...
We'll vote.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B is Resolution 1340 regarding the expansion of the city of Platteville assigned parking program. Item B is Resolution thirteen forty regarding the expansion of the City of Plattville assigned parking program. Have presentation.
Sure. In two thousand and twelve, the city council offered assigned parking in city parking lot number seven on the corner of Fourth and Furnace. Those seven parking spaces have now been leased out. A map showing those spaces, as well as all of our city lots, is included in your packet. At this time, given the parking spaces are all rented out, at this time, staff is making a recommendation, as well as the RDA, the city redevelopment authority is also making a recommendation. The city's recommendation is to use Lot Six, the twenty-seven spaces along Roundtree Avenue, as the expansion site for the program. The RDA's recommendation is to include the northernmost twelve spaces on Roundtree Avenue and the five spaces on the corner of Mineral and Fourth Streets. And then once those are leased out, the program could be expanded to include the thirteen spaces that faced Pine Street in Lot Five, located between Bonson and Fourth. So before you today is a task note, the resolution that adopts the staff recommendation, and the handout that goes with the assigned parking, as well as an email from the RDA chair explaining their recommendation. Any questions?
Larry?
Yeah.
I have a real problem with assigned or selling parking stalls on public streets and public parking lots. Looking at the one around Tree, granted, that one is more out of the way, and it's not used as much for people that would be going uptown. If we go with the RDA's idea of the one right by the post office, a lot of people, senior citizens, use that parking lot consistently, okay? A lot of people can use that and walk to Main Street, it's not very far. The other thing is, for all the taxpayers in this community, they pay for the maintenance of those streets, they pay for snow removal, they pay for upgrade, anything that needs to be comes out of the tax rolls. Basically, we're taking parking stalls away from these people that have already paid to use these. And I think it's not fair, and I don't think it's in good faith to the community. Thank you.
Sure.
Other comments?
Well, I have observed those two lots, one by the post office and one on Roundtree, because I live on the south side of town and go by them frequently. And the one that's by the post office, that is toward the street, is heavily used. Go by there sometime in the winter, the snow doesn't go off the vehicles, some of those, for a few days. And also I found for Roundtree Avenue that that particular lot, the twenty-seven spaces, will be full, or close to full, most of the time during the school year. As far as charging, I think we're looking at usage by rental units, by landlords. That's my conclusion, because these vehicles, I don't think, as Mike has pointed out, they're not used as far as, they're not for shopping. They're not there because they're shopping. It's longer-term parking, overnight parking. So I favor the twenty-seven stalls being converted to lease arrangement.
Which street?
That's, twenty-seven is Roundtree Avenue.
And what about the Pine Street one?
Well, Pine Street one is not up for an issue, but it was brought up here tonight, so.
Mr. Alge.
We do have two individuals who would like to speak on this, but if there's any other councilperson who would like to speak, I-
Well, I think, since I used to have a business on Main Street, that section which says twenty-four hour parking for aver, by the way, which is the section in front of Pine Street, needs to be reconsidered. I always felt, you can rotate those few spots that face the alleyway, which is north. This is on the, right across from the post office, on Bonson Street, on Fourth Street. But I think we should consider renting those out, Lot Five.
You're talking about Roundtree.
No, she's talking about Pine Street.
Talking about, you're talking about the one next to the post office? On the south side, I think there are a number, Howard, you probably could tell us how many?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, our twenty-four hour parking spots.
No, there are more than thirteen. Oh, I see.
Okay, but I guess my question, Barb, is are you wanting Lot Five in addition to?
Well, right now, one row has never been charged, and the people can park there for the entire tax, the tax season, pardon me, semester.
Just change the sign.
Well, we need to make a decision doing that. What I'm saying is, I think this is an opportunity to rent those spots out.
And again, is this in addition to what the staff recommendation is?
Staff was recommending Roundtree.
Only Roundtree at this point?
At this point.
The RDA had recommended something, I think, in Pine Street.
I guess I'm getting my streets mixed up. Roundtree, I agree with.
Okay.
This one is my comment, it's my comment.
We could always phase this in and do one spot, and then as the program gets leased out, move on to the next one. If you have multiple sites that you want considered.
Larry, would you refresh my memory of what the time span would be on those? I think you said-
What, the leases, or?
Yeah, because I think they were such that they wouldn't, they would be available for public parking in the summertime, is that correct?
No, no, they're not. The assigned parking fees are three hundred and sixty dollars a year, payable in advance. Thirty dollars per month, roughly. And they're valid from June first to May thirty-first. So it was set up to fit the school calendar.
So basically, when all the kids that rent these, because that's what we've seen now in the one, when they're gone, those parking stalls are still, you can't use them, but nobody's going to be there parking them, correct? Can you adjust the-
That's assuming the students, or whomever rents it isn't here in the summer.
And there are some that stay, granted, but not that many compared to the total number that are here.
This is the city's program, and you have complete jurisdiction over this.
Can you alter that date?
We will set it up to whatever you want. I'm sorry?
Can you alter that date? That'd be simple enough, that way the parking would be open for people during the summer months.
Go September one to May thirty-first?
Sure. Something like that, that would give it a little more flexibility. Because it doesn't make sense to have parking stalls sitting around, close proximity to downtown, or the senior citizens there, or anywhere else, and not be able to use them and nobody there. And for you folks, the parking lot that he was talking about that was, is now leased out, when they put the program into effect, nobody used it, okay?
Right, because there's so much free parking around.
Well, nobody used it until now, when all of a sudden, and I think, what is it, five students and two other folks?
I think you know the breakdown better than I do.
Yeah, okay, thank you, I'm just curious. But this is probably what is going to happen, is there'll be a lot of parking stalls that you can't use, and nobody's going to be using them. And I don't think that's a good idea, so if we get forced, this comes down, we don't have any choice with it, for some other reason, how where the vote might fall. At least maybe we can change the date, so they are available in the summertime.
If you decide you want to go that route, please make that part of the motion.
Okay.
I believe that was part of the recommendation of the RDA as well, that they were concerned that the parking spaces may not be utilized during the summer, but then anyone parking in them that didn't have a permit could get fined, so. We have two people who would like to speak, Rich Christensen for information purposes, so Rich. And then following Rich would be Jack Ludke, for information also.
Hello, I'm Rich Christensen, I live at ten South Third Street, here in Plattville. I've broken down my comments into two separate parts, and I'll go through them one by one. Downtown parking, part one. As far as I know, no one on the common council owns a downtown business, works downtown, or lives downtown. Last year, there were councilpersons who too often showed their unwillingness to listen. And so this year, Plattville has two new councilpersons. A long time ago, I would say, spring two thousand twelve, two or three councilpersons, along with the city manager, got the idea that they could make money from downtown parking. It didn't much matter to them that the plan they devised was unfair and would make downtown parking worse. They wanted the money. One of those councilpersons is now gone, but Barb Doss and Larry Berkey are here, and still trying to implement their plan. To what lengths will they go in trying to execute their plan? Would the city manager withhold information and mislead the common council? I don't know, but based on what I've seen over the last sixteen months, it seems the city manager is willing to go pretty far in order to get his way. At the last common council meeting, Larry Berkey said, "At this point, we have fully leased out the parking lot that is available for leased parking." "I wonder how those seven downtown parking spaces were magically sold this year, when not a single space was sold last year." "More specifically, I would like to know how five of those seven spaces were sold in late August, just days before the RDA and common council meetings. "I would like to know how those five spaces were sold before summer was over, and before real downtown parking began in the fall when students were back. "And I would like to know how those five spaces were sold when it seems the buyers were not yet even in Plattville." "In the staff report and fiscal note, the city manager wrote, 'Parking spaces are being leased out at three hundred and sixty dollars per year.' "That is simply not true. "Only one space was sold for three hundred and sixty dollars, the other six sold for either two hundred and seventy dollars or two hundred and eighty-five dollars." "I suppose the common council, if they wanted, could find out what really happened with those seven downtown parking spaces, and what other information has been withheld from them. "I won't hold my breath." "Downtown parking could have been improved a long time ago after the new police station was completed. "Seventeen parking spaces could have become and still can become twenty-four hour parking. "Year and after the city painted the lines and numbered them, those seventeen spaces were not made available. "But of course, the plan is to make money, not improve downtown parking, and so far, the RDA and common council are going along with it. "By the way, the common denominator of the RDA and common council is Barb Doss." Downtown parking, part two. "I've been a downtown resident for twenty years. "I've listened to and watched the common council and RDA for sixteen months now, and when they talked about parking, it was excruciating. "I've sat at their meetings and thought, what the heck is wrong with these people? "I've looked at downtown parking, I've read what was available, I've listened to a lot of people. "I've gone out in the middle of the night a number of times and counted the overnight parking in and around downtown. "And of course, I've lived and parked in the downtown area for twenty years, so I know a little bit about the parking. "Let me say, first of all, there is not a parking problem in downtown Plattville at this time. "As long as downtown parking spaces are shared, there should not be a problem. "Of course, there's always room for improvement, and there will be opportunities as time goes by. "But why some simple and easy things that would make a difference right now have not already happened, I don't know. "Most of us learned about sharing when we were in kindergarten. "When there's not enough to go around, we should share, and there are not enough downtown parking spaces to go around. "A downtown parking space should be available to multiple users. "A downtown parking space used by only one and sitting empty the rest of the time makes no sense. "A downtown parking space that is not used as fully as possible is a waste. "Twenty-seven downtown parking spaces not used at all is a parking problem. "I could talk for an hour about downtown parking, about right and wrong, about fairness, and about money-making schemes. "I won't do that, I'll just summarize by saying that the plan Barb Doss and Larry Berkey are pushing makes downtown parking worse. "There's not a single good reason to do this, the whole thing should be dumped. "Ken Killian is a pretty good councilperson. "He does the work, he asks questions, and he makes informed decisions. "In the past, even when I've disagreed with his decisions, I've at least understood his reasoning. "But I don't understand at all his attitude about downtown parking. "I hope he will explain. "Actually, I would greatly appreciate it if each councilperson who is going to vote for this plan would please explain his or her reasoning. "A one-sentence statement is fine, a more lengthy explanation of your reasoning is fine. "Refusing to state a reason is also fine. "I just think that this is a good opportunity for Plattville citizens to see what we have. "We can learn a little about individual councilpersons, and we can get an idea about this common council as a whole. "Thank you."
Thank you. Jack Ludke. And after Jack, Chuck Rundy.
My name is Jack Ludke, I'm the executive director for the Plattville Main Street Program. And I'm not speaking for or against either of these resolutions that are before you, or the various paths to take. I simply would like to remind the council that over the past two years, and Mr. Christensen alluded to it, the RDA has been regurgitating this discussion about downtown parking over and over again. It's not an easy subject to deal with. And I just wanted to speak tonight to the fact that they would like to continue the process of phasing in some of these parking spots in areas that would be more distant from the main core of downtown shoppers. And that plan was initiated last year with the desired permit parking on the seven spots that were first outlined. And when they were filled, I believe, the recommendation at that time was to then consider the next phase of this. They did that at a meeting a month ago. They also brought it back to the table this past week at their meeting. And I think the council should really give consideration to supporting their agenda of phasing this in. And that also was expressed by some of the merchants who attended the meeting the other night, about phasing the process in and not doing all of the Roundtree parking, for instance. And the Pine Street permit parking stalls there, that was not part of the next step. That could come, it may never come, but that would be another phase, maybe phase three if that, all of the other permit spots were sold. So I would just ask you to seriously consider following all the hard work that they've done in looking at that option. Thank you.
Question for you, Jack?
Sure.
Mike, we don't-
Oh, we don't do that?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Excuse me, I'm Chuck Rundy, I sit on the Downtown Redevelopment Authority Commission. And I'm here to remind or support the email that you all should have received from other person Doss. And along with that email, I think there was an attached letter from a downtown businessperson. And I'm open for any questions that anybody would have. I think Jack just spoke to the fact that we have rehashed this longer than I want to even talk about. But I think we have a plan in place now, and I'm here to support the, and back up the decision of the authority, so.
And we do have that email, it was mailed out to everyone, everyone had a chance to see that, I hope? And the RDA does recommend that no more than thirteen of the twenty-seven spots in the Roundtree parking area be added. And no more than six spots on the southeast corner of Fourth and Mineral. So again, they are not advocating a full twenty-seven at this time.
Correct.
Phase it in and see if the spots are rented, and if they're not rented, you know, they're available for other individuals to use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, Larry, a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Christensen brought up the idea that those parking lots all weren't sold for the same price, is that the case?
I believe the instruction was that they would be prorated at a rate of three hundred and-
Why prorated if they're, you can rent one for one month if you wanted to?
No, it's a year, it's a contract that runs until the end of May. But if you came September first and said you wanted a contract, you wouldn't, the first month probably isn't assessed. Let's see, it starts June first, so if you came September first, you'd miss June, July, and August.
Okay, I understand.
I didn't, I'm not the one that manages the program, so I'd have to go and research this, but I'm assuming that that's the reason why it would be less.
That's why they were inconsistent with three sixty.
Yeah.
Okay. It'd be interesting to know.
Okay, if you want, I can put an email together or something.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Other questions?
Did the businesses who attended agree to your plan? I'm hoping they did. The RDA?
The ones who attended the RDA? I guess, and I'm sorry, Mike, I'm...
They agreed?
Want to ask a question? Please do.
They did? Well, that's good news.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yes, I have one more. Chuck?
Chuck, I'm sorry. Could you come up to the microphone?
Sure.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No, no, you were right, and I was thinking something else.
Okay, thank you.
My mistake.
Do I have to re-ask?
Do I get Jack back then?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Chuck, why does the RDA think it's conducive to good business downtown by leasing parking spots? I don't see any positives there.
Mike, if I want to give you some, go back and give you some history. The topic was assigned to our committee to help resolve a parking problem. There was concern that employees of downtown businesses were taking prime spots during their workday. Prime spots away from shoppers, customers. And so after months of discussion, we came up with a plan to allocate some of the parking spots off of Main Street to be reserved for employees and businesses of downtown, avoiding taking good prime parking spots away from potential customers. So this is the plan we came up with. And I think we allocated seven, is that...
Yeah.
The first lot was seven, yeah.
And it was probably almost a year, six months to a year, and now they have been leased. And so let's come back to our commission again, what's your recommendation? And that's what Barb outlined in the email.
But that parking lot doesn't fit your scenario whatsoever. Five are rented to students and two are to other individuals. What does that help with?
Well, if they weren't available for long-term parking, these five or seven may take prime parking spots away from customers of downtown businesses. That's what we wanted to avoid.
But the thing of it is, the parking lot by the post office, that's definitely prime parking for downtown. I mean, it's seventy-five feet to the senior senate. It's what, anywhere from two hundred to fifty feet from the post office.
Mike, I'm not even sure where the seven are that have been leased. I know we drew it out at one point in time.
Well, I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about the other ones that you're looking at, that you want to take out in the parking lot next to the post office. That's another one of your recommendations.
Hmm, I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, lot five.
Okay.
Okay, you want the whole row facing Pine Street. That's one of your recommendations.
Okay. That's the furthest away from downtown?
Yeah.
I don't recall that. I'm sorry, but I don't recall that.
That's okay, that's fine.
If not correct.
No, it was six.
Really?
I thought they were off of, down by Roundtree.
Pine Street and Bronson Street, lot number five.
It says, oh.
Seventeen are leased, the next thirteen... Yeah, there you go. Did you see that?
No, I don't have my reading glasses.
Okay. I'm sorry. I don't mean to take advantage of you not seeing this.
No problem.
This is what I'm looking at right here. It says, "Located behind the post office on Pine Street between Bronson and South Fourth Street. Lot five has twenty-six stalls, which are numbered thirty-three through fifty-eight." Okay, they want to recommend a certain number of those be reserved. Okay? That's prime parking for downtown.
Okay, I just can't speak to that. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Chuck.
That's not at this time.
No, but if you get some, then you're going to go for more. That's the nature of the beast.
I guess my, where I have a problem here is with, this has been going on since I've been on the council now for a year and a half, this parking, and parking, and parking. And we sit up here and listen to people come up and talk to us on the mic, and tonight we get the choice of listening to two different scenarios. One, a downtown tenant say, "We don't have a parking problem downtown." Then, on the other hand, then we have the businesses speak, and they say, "We have a problem downtown." So who do we listen to? We gotta, we gotta work for all the taxpayers and voters. I just don't, I, I just can't grasp what's going on here with this, and it's drug out so long. Why do we gotta have two different things here? Do we put on boxing gloves and duke it out, or what? I just don't understand. That's it.
If they want to reserve spots, reserve them four or five blocks away from downtown.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
The fringes.
Yeah, it is true that the fringes are the ones that are being suggested.
Fringes up here are numbered seven. Brown Tree is, but it's still the southern fringe.
And that's why.
We can't go any further.
And I didn't say anything about that. I'm talking about the one on Pine Street. That's, they're projected to do, and you folks all know as well as I know, if you get something, you're going to get a little more, and you're going to get a little more, and then you're going to want other things if it works and it generates funds.
But if...
I don't think that's, okay.
If the Roundtree ones don't all go, we're surely not going to go to another parking lot and try to rent more.
Granted, those probably will go, because if I was a student, that would be a pretty good parking spot, and I don't blame them.
Well, and I will say that we did have requests from a couple of students that I recall. Letters were actually sent to the council requesting an assigned spot because they were working at a job that they got home quite late, and they were concerned about walking blocks from wherever they could find a parking space to their apartment. And so that was also one of the other considerations. We had more than one student come and ask for that. And so I am in favor of adding some additional, not twenty-seven, I think that's too many. And I think Roundtree is a good one to look at.
I don't have a problem with the Roundtree one.
Okay, and that, and that is, you know, that can certainly be suggested. The staff report says all twenty-seven in Roundtree. I'll go on record as saying I'm not in favor of that. I think that's too many. I would also be in favor of the RDA's recommendation, which is to lease it during the school year so that there's no question that during the summer, it's available. I'm not sure how we sign that, but I guess that's something we'd have to figure out.
Well, you're assuming that all these people who are going to be renting them are students, and I don't see what difference it makes whether someone's a student, if somebody works full-time downtown, or if they live in downtown. Doesn't matter if they're a student.
The only difference is the students go home for the summer.
Not all of them do.
Well, no, they don't. Not all.
Not all of them do.
About twelve hundred stay here out of eight thousand. Okay, but anyway, people, that's information I got out of my alumni, okay? Anyway, that's fine, but why not have it? If they don't have it rented and they're not here, why not make it available for the public?
We don't know they're not going to be here. You can't assume that.
Mike, do you want to make a motion? What you want?
Are we ready?
Well, I think we're getting there.
If nobody else has any comments, then yes, I'd say we're ready.
Well, I do have one more comment. Okay, I still say that the city is not responsible for providing free parking 24/7 to either those who work downtown or those who live downtown. The city provides a lot of free parking around this entire district. Some are two hours, some are four hours, and I think, I could be wrong, but I think these on the south side or the north side of City Park, I think those might even be eight hours free. The city provides a lot of free parking, but it is not responsible for providing 24/7 free parking. There's very, I don't know of any city in America that allows free parking 24/7 in a downtown area.
And I didn't mention that at all. I didn't mention anything about 24/7, like the ones that are...
Well, I did mention it. This is how I feel.
Oh, that's okay. I thought you were talking to me.
No, I'm talking to everybody.
Okay. But remember, your taxes, your taxes pay for all this, okay?
Well, we have, I mean, I'd like you to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to accept what the RDA said, what Barb sent the letters on, and because business owners were in attendance. And I'm sorry, I'm not good at figuring out what the resolution's numbers were.
That's all right. It could be an assigned...
There is a resolution number here.
The assigned parking expansion would be, as I understand it, no more than thirteen of the twenty-seven spots in the city's Roundtree Avenue parking lot. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Is there a second?
So that would, that would replace the paragraph on the resolution that says lot six. Does everybody understand that that's what's happening?
Yep.
Okay.
So Resolution thirteen forty.
Thirteen forty. So the motion is thirteen on Roundtree.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that right? Yes, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, sorry, candidate.
Candidate.
Either one.
Second by Depp. All right, we'll vote. Steiner?
Yes.
Dan?
No.
Zachhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have a quick question for the council. If those spaces rent, do you want me to bring this back again, or do you want to tell me what you want as the next step, or no next step?
We'll wait and see if they rent. Last time it took six months, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll wait and see.
And by the way, parking, parking issue will never go away. Because the city's growing, the university's growing, it will always be an issue once in a while. That's the way life is.
Okay, where are you next?
Information and Discussion, ordinance thirteen nineteen, amending the official traffic map. We're back on parking. No parking on Calhoun Drive. No parking on Ready Drive.
It's no answer.
Minaj Drive, Calhoun Drive, Amar Drive, and Kamla Court. Staff presentation on this.
At our last meeting, the council kind of shifted directions and decided to do a comprehensive approach instead of an individual street. Therefore, we shifted it back down for information and discussion. Hord, do you want to explain it a little?
Sure. Last time, we had option one and option two. Option one allowed for up to forty-eight hour parking on Calhoun Drive only. Option two would have done no parking, 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM on Calhoun Drive only. And then, as the city manager just mentioned, there was interest in doing a more comprehensive approach, and so we have what we call, what I'm calling, option three, which is no parking, 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM for those streets that were mentioned, Kamla Court, Ready Drive, Minaj Drive, Calhoun Drive, and Amar Drive. So I think that that was the intent of the council direction from last time. If that's not the case, then we're here to give additional instruction, to receive additional instructions. I have received some information from different people who, most of them are preferring option three in the notes, in the emails, and phone calls that I've received so far.
We do have three individuals who asked to speak on this, and I think I'll let them speak first, and then the council will have that information when we have our discussion. And again, this is information and discussion. We will not be voting on this tonight. First is Beth Smith, followed by Darrell Logan, followed by Mike Connolly.
Hi, I'm Beth Smith, and we are the only house that is facing Calhoun Drive. Thank you for your willingness to look at this option for us. Bob and I would be perfectly happy with any of the three options proposed. Thank you.
Mr. Logan?
Hi.
And if you would, just give your name and address for our records.
I'm Darrell Logan. We live over on Ready Drive. I attended some of those fun meetings, was that about a year ago or so? And I was very happy with the existing situation. And now I'm not quite as happy with it. I suppose I can live a weekend, my wife and I, with all three options. I'm a little concerned, though, about allowing students to park anywhere in Golden Heights, as it is, and particularly on Ready Drive. That's quite close to the new dorm that was put in, Roundtree. And I really think students will start filling that street up on both sides in quite a distance there. I know it's a little far from the campus, but I still think for free parking, that they'll park there all day if you allow them to do that. And that, to me, is a safety issue, security issue, having cars parked along both sides of that street. In the past, we've had one family that rented to two students on that street, and they parked all winter along that street until the ordinance was finally approved. And you, you know, you've got the snow that builds up there coming down the hill. You can't get all of that away, and it hits both sides, one or the other, as they do the alternate, you know, back and forth parking. And I think you have some safety issues. And if you allow them to park up further, we did have a break-in last year in the area of a house close to ours, where I guess some gentleman parked in the church and walked through and broke into a house. But I think when you allow random people to park in front of your building, your house, chances are they're going to look at it, scope it out, and I know some of you have that anyway, but they're going to scope it out. And there's always a chance that they might decide to borrow something from you permanently. So I'm really against that. And I really think, and we do have some children in the neighborhood near the doctors, he's got three, of course, and I think as you go around that corner, you've already got people that go faster than they should. And if you allow parking on both sides of that street, that pinches that street down quite a bit. I have nothing against the Smiths having the no parking removed in front of their, you know, their, on their street, Calhoun, Calhoun Drive. And that, to me, would allow them to have, what is it, studies, Bible studies, whatever they like, because they could park on Calhoun, that goes on for a hundred feet or so there. So they'd have that ability, you know, that wouldn't be taken away from them. But I really don't want cars all up and down Ready Drive if we can prevent that from happening. And once again, you know, I think you just have a safety issue, a security issue, and I do believe students won't start parking there. We already have on the other end of Golden Heights, where you go down to Southwest Road, we had fourteen cars there tonight. They're starting to build up, that steep hill. That'll be fun plowing snow there and keeping us all getting down there, down that road safely in the winter. But there were seven on each side as they went home tonight. It's building up more and more. It used to be one or two. Now we're up to at least seven tonight on each side. So, you know, that's obviously, that's fourteen cars. And I think it'll continue. Parking fees have gone up for students and for faculty. As faculty, we pay $300 a year to park on the campus. And I think that drives more students as the fees go up. It drives more of them to look for any space that's at least within a reasonable walking distance. So once again, I really would like the university to have more responsibility in making sure they have all the parking, even though I work there. And I think they should be taking care of parking for students, a hundred percent. And I think we should, I go extreme, but I don't think it's realistic, but I'd like to see the parking taken off of the streets around the campus and have them forced to be on campus parking. I don't think that's going to happen. And I'm not really sure how well the two-hour and four-hour parking ordinances are being applied here, because I see students in front of a marquee constantly. I don't know how that's checked. I'm sure the police chief maybe could explain that if necessary, but it seems like there are always cars there. And I think that's a wrong thing to have parking on both sides of that street, too, because of the steepness and the curve. And one of these days, unfortunately, somebody is going to get hit there. And we shouldn't be waiting till accidents happen. But anyway, I think option two is the one that would be my best compromise. But if you go with three, then I guess that would mean that we would have enforcement at least from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Is that what we're hearing? For cars off of that street? But it doesn't solve that problem of students parking there during the day, and I know only time will tell, but I'm almost, I'm almost going to bet you, I'd bet a lot of money if it was legal, that I think they're going to park up that street there, both sides, and almost guarantee it. Because they search for parking all the time. And that's very close to Roundtree, and it's still reasonably accessible within ten minutes[1790.48] And that's very close to Roundtree, and it's still reasonably accessible within ten minutes of the campus. So, that, I, I really oppose that, having a parking there on Ready.
And what, what is your address, then?
Oh, God, I hate to give it out.
Yes.
Do you need it?
Yes, we do.
All right, we're eleven fifty, Ready Drive.
Thank you.
Okay.
Up on the curb.
On the curb. Well, okay, go on.
Yep, Mike.
Oh, Mike.
No, it's, yep.
He's on the curb, too.
I'm on the curb, too, I think the whole road is a curb until you pass our house. I'm Mike Connolly, my wife and I live at ten twenty Ready Drive, we own lot one and lot two of the Golden Heights Estates. Just as a little reminder for, because there's new members here, I went to every single, one of the seven meetings, I think it was, that Larry had put together to try and put this together. And since we're a little remote, even though we're very close to the dorm, we had decided, most of us, that making it all no parking would be easiest, with, with the one exception that we'd want to make sure we have exceptions for parties, that we could get, you know, a pass, you know, so that we could have some people park and whatnot, which is what we were told would happen. As soon as the signs went up, my neighbor had a first-year birthday party for their daughter, and they called down to get those, and they were told, no parking means no parking, no, no exceptions or anything like that. So, we have no way of getting exceptions, which is what the original plan was back, you know, a year ago when we decided this. We also decided that we would probably revisit it, which we obviously are now. I, like my neighbor, I'm a huge fan of not having, being inundated throughout the whole daytime with, you know, college student cars and things like that. I think the three to six parking, or the no parking, three to six in the morning, is good because it offers no overnight parking. However, it still does allow for being inundated all the way up the street, which is already a busy street for walking, riding bikes, at all times of the year. Another option which isn't on here is making a permit, which is what we tried to avoid. We tried to, you know, our neighborhood tried to simplify it for everyone, because all of the permit and colors and whatever for the rest of the city became kind of like a monopoly game, trying to figure out who can park where, when, and whatnot. But, you know, if we're trying to restrict so that it's not students parking up the road, that might be an option as well, so.
So, what option are you going for, then, Mike?
Well, I, I want to go for the option that, that we, we voted as a community last year, which was no parking, with the option of getting overnight, you know, passes or, or exception passes, but apparently no parking is no parking, period. That's what we were led to believe when we agreed to the no parking signs.
What, anybody know what the covenants are for that out there?
Doesn't matter, it's covenants. There's no overnight parking is what it's supposed to be, but it's covenants, I mean, covenants are broken all the time, so.
Does the covenant cover the whole area?
Covenant covers all of Golden Heights Estates except for what are listed on here and on the city map as outlots that are owned by Paris Ready, which if they ever do become individual lots, they will not be under the covenant, so whatever.
And the covenant says no overnight parking.
Covenant says no overnight parking, correct.
But it's not enforced.
It's a covenants, who enforces it? Well, who's supposed to enforce it, it's a covenant. The neighbors.
The covenant, the association, whatever you have.
We don't have an association.
And, and the nice, the unusual thing about the covenants is, is that it only covers the people who live there. It doesn't cover the people who don't live there that want to park there.
So, if there's not a no parking sign, someone from, you know, the college can come up and park. They don't have to obey the covenants, they didn't, you know, buy a lot there, pay taxes there, live there, sign the covenants, so. In answer to your question, which one am I for, I'd be either for a permit, a little less likely for the no overnight parking.
You, you favor permit parking?
I don't like permits, but I favor what we passed last year, which is what we were told could happen, which is no parking signs, and we could get exceptions for people, if you're gonna have a party, if you're gonna have an overnight guest, you can get a overnight tag. But as soon as the signs went up and the first time someone tried to do that, we were told, no, no parking is no parking, period.
Well, that's not what I was expecting you to say.
Well, I have to talk. The reason we discussed this, and I had long conversation with the police chief, is you are gonna have students trying to find parking. If you work on campus, you need your students to pay your paycheck. You know, you can't bring nine thousand students to campus and not have them find something to park in, because they're driving in from somewhere. I personally, I'm gonna run, I'm landlocked in my business, we're getting a lot of business, that's the point of having a business. We are, I need Ready Drive for four months out of the year. I may or may not use it, but my clients are gonna need it, and it's already become a problem. And this seemed to be an appropriate solution, is that there would be no parking from three to six in the morning. Students, individuals, families would certainly remove their cars during that period of time, and could have their parties, and their families, and their guests, without having to talk to the police chief. I think that is an appropriate way to spend the police chief's time, is to, I don't think the students are gonna go there anytime soon. They found their parking, I mean, where I live, which is up near Legion Field, I have students parking there. And they commute in because there's bus transportation, which we're fortunate. But, so my, my reaction is, let's be realistic, let's think of the entire town. This is prime parking, it will always be, it's gonna come in your direction, no matter how you look at it. There's gonna be more residence halls going up, and the university unfortunately is landlocked. So, that's my background on this.
Any other questions for Mike?
I have one quick one.
Yes, sir.
Just to confer with both you gentlemen, because I was over there at ten thirty this morning, and there were nine cars on Pioneer Drive working their way up. This morning, I had to actually work around some of them because of what I was doing. And it's only gonna get worse.
Where were you at?
Pioneer Road?
Doc Bosworth's house, Pioneer Road.
You're, you're talking the opposite end of the subdivision. That's Pioneer, yeah.
That's coming up off of Southwest Road.
Okay, that's road west.
Right, up that way.
Okay.
I, I think probably nine vehicles working their way up the street to get up around, they weren't all the way up past Bosworth House, but they were on both sides. And the last three weeks, it started out four, now it's getting more and more, as people find that they can park there.
Correct.
So.
And that, that's why I would favor more of a permit situation.
Well, and the thing of it is, all these, this area we're talking about right now, people chose those places to build their beautiful homes because of what it was. They didn't expect an invasion of cars.
Correct.
Okay, in the interest of moving this forward, because we do have a budget session yet tonight, folks, is there anybody else, thank you, Mike, is there anything else than anybody else would like to say about this issue? I think it's interesting, I, I recall that, that the idea was that you could get a special parking permit if you were going to have overnight guests. And so, I, I think, I would, I would like to have that looked at, to see whether or not that's possible to do in an area that we say no parking.
We have.
When, when it's a prohibition on parking twenty-four seven, it's problematic to give excused parking, because people have the expectation that there will never be vehicles there. And now, you're, I'm granting vehicles permission to be there.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, Doug, but I also remember the discussion, that, that was a possibility.
What, what has happened is the rec. department and the police department will hand out passes for overnight stay if it's a permit parking area. So, for example, on Chestnut Street, you can only park there if you have a permit. Well, if you don't have the permit, you can get a pass, and you can have overnight guests, you can have guests for a party. You can have guests park on the street if you get the overnight pass. But the difference being is, one is no parking, and the other one is permit parking. So, you have to have the, the option of parking there under circumstances.
Yes, Captain.
Okay, I favor option three, which is no parking, three to six. And again, the, the issue here is, would there be guests parking allowed?
The ability to give excused parking?
Yes, parking, it'll, it'll be no, no parking overnight, no parking, three to six AM.
It would be my.
Now, what if you had, if they had guests come in for a house, could that house get permission to have, say, four cars that park on the street?
Overnight.
Overnight. Option three would allow me the ability to grant excused parking.
Okay. That issue has come up, so, okay.
And the reason, the difference is, because cars do park on the street during specific time periods. It's not a complete no parking, it's only from three to six, so.
Right, right.
As long as there isn't the expectation that there will never be a car there, we have the ability to waive it.
Where I've run into trouble is if someone has work on their driveway, and they're resurfacing it, and they say, I need to park on the street for a day and a half or two days, the expectation is that there will never be a vehicle on the street. So, that for me to tell them, go ahead and park there, I'm signing on to the liability, potentially, if someone were, in the worst-case scenario, to hit that vehicle.
Well, that, I don't see that happening. I mean, I had my, I had a brand-new driveway put in a couple of years ago. I couldn't park on my driveway for five or six days, and I called the police department, explained I had to park on the street during that time, it was never a problem at all.
That's what I'm saying, there, I have the ability to grant excused where you live, Patrice. In this area, it is signed no parking at any time. So, people have the expectation that there will not be vehicles on the street. I can exceed, I can exceed time limits. I can't just outright say you're fine to be there when vehicles are prohibited twenty-four seven.
Doug, are you saying with option three, because the vehicles are allowed to park there at certain times, that they would be able to get a guest pass for the?
A guest pass or excused parking.
Okay, there's an option.
Well, then, we should stop discussion right now, because I'm getting all worked up.
Okay, we're, you know, this is something we're gonna be bringing back at the next meeting. If you have questions, more questions, certainly get ahold of staff, ask them questions.
Well, it seems like we're getting all different opinions.
We are getting different opinions, and I think that each individual has a, a different concern, and so, we need to weigh that. Resolution amending the city of Platteville's employee handbook, employee residency requirements. There's information in our packet on this, and our attorney is here who drafted it. If you have questions, or Brian, do you want to give us an overview, perhaps?
The overview is that the section that came into effect July second, two thou, twenty thirteen, sixty-six point zero five oh two, prohibits employee residency requirements except for certain specified persons, law enforcement, fire, and emergency service personnel. There is no definition of these type, these people, these, police, fire, emergency service are not defined in the statute. So, it's, there's a need to go to other sources in the state code to figure out exactly what those words might be, might mean in this section. The law permits residency requirements for fire, police, and emergency personnel within, a requirement that they live within fifteen miles of the city limits of Platteville. So, certainly, that's okay for personnel, as long as they're not vol, for those type of personnel, as long as they are not volunteers who are otherwise employed with the city, if they're, then at that point, you, you can't impose a residency requirement on a city employee who's also a volunteer. There's issues under the ordinance, or, excuse me, under the statute as to whether or not a city official is also an employee within the meaning of the statute, and other, other matters that will need to be sorted out by a court, or clarified by the legislature, before it's really, before one can really say exactly what the statute means.
Questions? Yes.
Brian, this one paragraph here where it says, furthermore, it appears that a municipality may enter into an individual contract or collective bargaining agreement that includes an agreement to adhere to a residency restriction, and individual contract or collective bargaining agreement containing a residency restriction that was in effect on July second, two thousand and thirteen, may remain in effect until the contract or agreement is terminated, extended, modified, or renewed. Is that as it's stated, or do you have another, an explanation for me on that? It's actually on the first page of this one.
Yeah, and I make direct reference to that statement in my memo on page four. And I follow up that reference that you just read with, I am far from certain that all or any part of that statement that you just read is correct, and the paragraph which follows tells me the legislative council is uncertain as well. And they then say, you know, for after, right after what you read, ultimately, if challenged, any question about the interpretation or effect of the X residency provision would be decided by a court based on the particular facts and circumstances presented. That, that, you know, I, I.
That opens it up to court.
Quoting their summary, or their, their, their summary, to explain that they too don't know what the words mean exactly, so they're, they, they say, this is what we think it means, but you won't know until the court tells you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would add a different, an additional clarification, which is, or until the legislature clarifies exactly what they know.
Kind of in the middle, then, aren't we, with this?
There are arguments for and against, that's correct.
Thank you.
Ken?
The thing that struck me the most was, it says that the legislature finds that public employee residency requirements are a matter of statewide concern. Why is it of concern as to the requirement, say, in the city of Platteville? Why is that of concern to somebody that's over in La Crosse or Madison? So, what does it mean? They don't really explain what the statewide concern is. I think this is a, this is a unnecessary law that is going after something that is not of concern. I'm not concerned about parking in Belmont, or residency, I should say, in Belmont, or residency in La Crosse or Madison, but I am concerned about it here. Though I do believe that certain individuals, employees, should be required to live within a certain distance of the city or within the city. Then going back to, the other point, going back to page four, at the end, it says that we can enter into individual contracts. On Mike, I think you maybe brought that up already.
Dallas.
Yeah. So, I don't think it's prohibited, but when somebody is hired, we could enter into an individual contract with that person. Again, what is the concern? I don't see it.
The actual whole thing came about because in Milwaukee, I believe, the firemen wanted to move outside of the total inner city of Milwaukee and live in the suburbs, and that's where this whole thing came about, and that's why you have it right now.
Oh, that's, that's one city.
One person.
Exactly, but when they look at it that way, they also look at the whole state, make a law.
And it was passed by the legislature, and so, that's the law that we are now under. And I, as our attorney outlined, it is not clear in many sections as to exactly what can and can't be done.
We could be the first one to challenge it, then, have it go to court, and we'll find out.
Milwaukee challenging.
Milwaukee is actually challenging, I guess.
They're under home rule.
They don't have money for that.
Yeah, under home rule, that's true. Okay, any other questions on that? Otherwise, I'll read that over, you know, five or six times, and then we have the question of amending our ordinance regarding residency, and that will have to be addressed, so.
If there's, you know, if, when you read, when you review it, if you have questions that you, didn't occur to you tonight, please feel free to pass them through the city manager to me, and I'll be happy to reply.
Okay.
Is there any direction for staff, or do you want this on for information and discussion, again? We'd like to have a final resolution for you to adopt at some point, so, you know what I'm saying? Do we, do you want?
Yeah, it's been on for information discussion several times, I, I would think it should be on for action next time, that's my opinion.
For action, yes.
As it's.
For action.
As it's currently drafted?
I don't care if it comes back. I don't care if it comes back. I'd want it to come back.
You don't want it to come back?
We are operating right now under a scenario that is not what the state law says, so...
Actually, the paragraph that I read pretty much summarizes a whole lot of it, the whole thing, and what we really need to do and what we have to do unless it's challenged in court. Because this is what they state here, and as Brian helped me with it here, unless they challenge it in court, nobody knows. So, as is, anything that we're, we have contracts on right now, stay in effect until, and with the residency, until they're either terminated, extended, modified, or renewed.
Right, right now, you have two employment contracts. Number one, the city manager, which expires the end of this year, and number two, WPPA, which is our police officers, and that also expen- expires the end of this year. So, the rest of the employees, we do not have contracts with. So I, I, we still have to figure out some direction for them.
Does that need to be done today?
Well, right now, we are operating under the previous handbook, which is in your packet, which requires residency, and the state law was passed saying that we could not legally do that. So, we need to change our ordinances or our handbook in order to accommodate the new laws.
Actually, what...
The timing for doing that is entirely up to you.
Actually, what they stated is you can't have it in your handbook, but according to this, it doesn't mean you can't have it, just not in the handbook.
I mean, that's one interpretation, and that's, and I'm not...
Is that, am I wrong? No, please help me with this.
Are, are you wrong?
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Don't know.
We don't know. There's, there's good arguments that you're wrong.
Okay.
Um, because the statute's pretty clear, it says, "Don't do that." Um, but the legislative council has come through with their interpretation that even though it says you can't do that, you can.
Okay.
And I can understand for a subset of employees that are also city officials, how you might have an argument there, maybe.
Are you, are you talking about the contracts? The contracted employees?
Um, I...
Because that was the section you read, was regarding contract employees, right?
Yeah, but, I think he's trying to expand the notion that you'd make these agreements for city employees generally.
So you have every employee under a contract? Is that the environment you're picturing?
There is, there's also one other thing. It says that if your, and, and Brian made reference to it, if your, um, fire, police, uh, emergency person, I mean, we went ahead and set up our emergency plan, I believe that you were the gentleman in charge?
Yeah.
Okay, they have to live within fifteen miles of the city.
Well, I, I think that that's the question that we asked Brian, and that was the opinion that we got, which, was that many of those positions would have difficulty requiring them to live in the city.
Um, actually, what he said was, they don't have a definition of what is an emergency personnel, and what is, if they, if they had that definition, then we'd know exactly if that person would fit the description, and then they would be required.
Yeah, that's fair.
I mean, I did try to provide what I think is a reasonable source of, of definitions for those words, police, fire, and emergency personnel, and, you know, the, a reasonable definition of emergency personnel is people who are, who have medical training, who come to, you know, rescue you when you're hurt.
As long as they're not volunteers. Volunteers are not required.
Volunteers, you can have within, yeah, right.
I guess at, at this time, my advice would be to remove paragraph D and move forward with changing the handbook, so that the handbook reflects what the state law says.
I would agree.
Put this one here now, for instance, Wisconsin State Stat- Section sixty-four dot point oh nine, entitled City Manager Qualification Selection Removal, contains a provision that states residents in the city or state shall not be a qualification for the office of city manager.
Uh, that's what it says.
Yeah.
It does, then read down a little farther.
Yes, it means it, means it's debatable.
And I think that's the whole thing, is that it's debatable. But, the question for the council is whether or not, as a council, you want to address this again as an action item. At that point, you could say, "We can stay with our handbook, we're comfortable with that," or you could say, "We're going to, um, go by the state law, which says that we cannot have a residency requirement except for emergency personnel, fire and police." Um, I think we should bring it back, I think we should resolve this. Um, we've had it on for information and discussion a couple of times. So, um, what I'm hearing is basically, if, if the resolution is brought back, I think as it's been presented, then the council can say, "Yes, we want to make a change or no we don't?"
Okay.
So, one more time.
So we'll, we'll bring it back next time for an action item. Okay.
And what are we requesting of the staff to review, to bring to us? From the city manager?
Nothing, nothing, bring back as is.
Okay, thank you.
That's the interest, yep.
Um, ordinance amending section thirty-one nineteen, license fee in turn, waiver of taxi license fee for not-for-profits. Um, Larry, or...
Sure. Uh, this is a request that we received from the Grants County Road Crew, uh, which is a nonprofit five oh one C three organizations, organization, excuse me. Uh, they provide rides to and from local licensed alcohol establishments. Um, the use of this facility has increased over the years, um, and as a city, we charge a taxi fee, and you have to be licensed as a taxi driver. Um, and what this ordinance does is, it waives the license fee for serving as a taxi if you're a five oh one C three organization. So if you're a not-for-profit, you can serve as a taxi without having to pay the fee, but you still have to be licensed.
Any questions? Okay, that'll be back for next time. Resolution to partially discontinue Hair Street, I think that's been on before.
Yep.
Last time we sat in public hearing.
We have a public hearing, so...
Okay, anybody have any questions on that one? All right, we're gonna go right by that one then. Uh, ordinance thirteen twenty, amending the official traffic map, Second Street evening closure. Doug or Larry, I don't know which one of you wants to...
Doug, you wanna take this?
One of the priorities for impacting, um, alcohol-related issues, as identified by the council, was the potential closure of Second Street. Um, we've had discussions about this with staff, and then, um, I think, at one point, Larry was directed to, um, and in turn directed us, to come up with a proposal to bring to the council, so that it could be discussed and evaluated, and a decision can be made. Initially, we looked at blocking Second Street off, um, on probably Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, from probably about ten P.M. to, um, after bar time with a barricade, or some other means, a chain or whatnot. Discussions with property owners in the area led us to a compromised position that would achieve pretty much the same thing by closing Second Street to through traffic and to parking from ten P.M. to, um, six A.M. Twenty, uh, excuse me, seven days a week, though. And that was the proposal that I advanced to Howard Crowfoot, and he checked into the legality of it and other, um, potential, um, issues, and ultimately was able to determine that it is possible to go that route. Um, that was the idea that we have advanced and, um, contained in, um, the documentation and, um, other staff reports for the council for your consideration.
And this would just be the one block?
One block, from Main Street to Mineral. And the reasons, again, for doing it are to hopefully improve pedestrian safety with the proximity of the bars and the lack of ample sidewalk. You have people spilling out onto the, the roadway, or just not crossing the street in a very responsible fashion. We're hoping to improve that situation.
Originally, we had talked about a chain going across the front, and, uh, what we found was that there's a driveway, and that there's, uh, other complications to doing that. And this alternative, um, is one that everybody can agree on, that is involved in the situation, um, but it does require the posting of additional signs in the downtown. So that is kind of the, the trade-off, is that you'd have to put up a couple more signs.
So the, um, business owners on Second Street have been made aware of this proposal?
The...
Well, specifically, the business owner impacted with the driveway.
So just one?
Yeah. As far as notification, yes, um...
Okay.
I've spoken to Jack Luke Key about it, and, uh, he felt that this was a much preferable option to the chain that would, um, have to be moved periodically, or whenever somebody needed access to that area. It's not perfect in the sense that a chain or other barricade would obviously provide better protection for pedestrians and/or people loitering in the street, but, um, I would hope that people could get accustomed to the change in traffic pattern, you know, coupled with education campaign and enforcement as necessary to train, get them trained up on the fact that that block means, or, um, Second Street is closed to traffic and parking during evenings or overnight.
And I think this recommendation came out of the, um, meetings that were held with the business owners on Second Street. There were like seven or fifteen recommendations, something like that, and that, this was one of them?
This was one of the ones that the council identified as a priority to look into. I mean, the public intox ordinance and a couple others were ones that the council felt had merit and, um, needed further examination.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if the bar, or the business owners were at least made aware of this. I don't know how that's going to be done, perhaps the Main Street programs already talked to more than just the one on the corner, but I think if we're going to close the street from ten P.M. to, or, yeah, ten P.M. to six A.M., that they ought to be aware of that, so...
So everyone will have to move their cars from ten...
Yes, at ten P.M. And I guess that would be my other question, I hope that initially, at least, we actually give warnings, not just...
And the way I view it is that they'd be, if they're parked there, they're gonna be heading off the street, so I don't envision citing for that kind of thing.
Any other questions?
Yes, Doug, now, are we talking just the weekend? It's not a permanent closing?
No, this, this, what I'm proposing is seven days a week.
Permanent closing of Second, that block of Second Street?
Correct.
From ten P.M. to six A.M.
Delivery driver, I wouldn't like you very much.
From ten P.M. to six A.M.?
Wouldn't it be delivering?
No, no, you, I just asked you if that was a permanent closing of Second Street, and you said, "Yeah," so you would be permanent for all time.
Ten, ten P.M. to six night.
Ten P.M. to six A.M.
Just that?
Yes.
Because that's what I, well, that's fine, because, but when I asked you, "Is this a permanent closing?", I meant permanent closing that street off, period, not any timeframe. You're not doing that.
No.
Just the ti- just the timeframe.
Just during, it would be overnight hours, ten P.M.
Okay, that's fine. Next question. I know it's a good idea, because it keeps cars and stuff out of there, problems with cars getting scratched, creating fights, this sort of thing. What do you think the possibility is that once you close a street like that, of all the open intoxicants going from one bar to the other, walking back and forth across the streets? I see a big issue there.
That's something that, uh, we take a very dim view of, and I think that it, there's kind of a trade-off, that you would have people lingering there. I worked overnight on, um, Labor Day weekend.
You do it anyway.
And they're not doing that, because we cite people for open intoxicants.
Right.
But they were still lingering there until three fifteen, three thirty in the morning. And, right now, if I don't take some kind of precaution, either what we're proposing here or discussing here, or start to cite people and, again, educate them and warn them about standing in the roadway, I have real concerns about, um, tragedy happening down there. So that some measure, I think, needs to be taken to improve the situation.
So with everything we looked at, then, it's, it's a fair trade-off with what we're proposing?
I'm hopeful that it is.
Okay.
I mean, there's always the law of unintended consequences, or, but whatnot, but I'm hopeful that it would be an improvement.
Okay, thank you.
How many parking spaces are we talking about?
Five?
Five, six, maybe at the most.
I knew it wasn't a very large number, so five or six, probably. Okay. All right, if there are no further questions, that concludes our portion before we head into the work session, so we will be going in to discuss the two thousand and thirteen budget, the library block development, and the museum task force recommendations. We'll take a five-minute break or a two-minute break.